You want to wait?
Yes, yes, if you could just start with the first slide, that would be great.
I can do that.
Wonderful, thanks. Well, hello everyone and welcome to your first year journey as a Vermont School Board member. We at the V S B A are very excited to spend this time with you today. And our goal is for you to leave this training and and the one you'll have next week as well. With an understanding of your role as a school board member and the essential work of school boards. And
I'm getting there, Sue. I really am.
Okay. That's okay. I'll just keep on going.
You just vent up for a little while, we'll we'll be good.
I'll start introducing the staff because that was my next thing I was going to do. So just wanted to introduce our staff to you. We have a small but mighty staff at the V S B A. We have four staff members. My name is Sue Saglowski and I am the Executive Director of the V S B A. I'm also an attorney licensed in Vermont and I have served many years prior to this as a school board member, including time as a clerk, a chair and a supervisory union board chair. Also with us tonight is Sandra Cameron. Sandra is a Director of Public Policy with the V S B A. And she'll be covering a couple of the early slides and telling you a bit about what she does in that role. Sandra has experience in education administration and extensive knowledge about Vermont's pre-K system. And then we have Susan Holson, who is the, she's waving to you. Yeah, she's the person who who is behind this training. Susan is doing, leading most of the training today. She has taught at the college level and also has served as a school board member. And finally, there's Carrie Lamb and Carrie is our Director of Operations. She has over 20 years of service with the V S B A. And if she can't answer your question, she knows who can. And Carrie has also served as a school board member. So that is, that's the V S B A. We're always happy to hear from you. And now you have a little bit of an introduction as to who we are. Before we move into talking about the essential work of Vermont School Boards, we wanted to let you know about all of the resources that the V S B A provides to school board members. So that you will know where to go when you have questions. The V S B A is a nonprofit member association. Our members are Vermont Supervisory Unions and Supervisory Districts. And we exist to support school boards in serving as effective trustees for education on behalf of their communities. And also to enhance the cause of public education in Vermont. Susan is now going to cover the next slide, which it has to do with the board development opportunities offered by the V S B A.
So we do a bunch of different kinds of information sharing. And our real mission from the board development side is to support school boards in the work that you do. We do that in a variety of ways. One is through webinars. We have a regular webinar series called School Board U. And that's a monthly gig. It's Thursdays, the first Thursday of every month at lunchtime. From 12 to 1, we do a variety of topics every month, a different topic. There are some sort of evergreen topics that will repeat time after time. And then we add new ones and take a different spin on some of the standards. And then we archive all of those on our website. So with the new board packet that you received, we recommended some of these programs to you specifically. Some of them are have already passed and so we'll direct you to the archive on the website for those. And I'll I'll share the website with you in just a moment. And others are yet to come and we encourage you to register, register for those. We also and those are free for our V S B A board members, excuse me, members of V S B A member boards. Did I get that right? I think I did. And we also will then add in additional webinar programs when a specific topic seems really critical. So clearly, we did a lot of improvising last spring when things were happening and changing very quickly. We, when the state of Vermont changed temporary, made temporary changes to the open meeting law, we covered that in a webinar. We have a special webinar coming up in May about the board's role in hiring and firing personnel, for example. And and we notify all of our members through email about the coming events as well as in various newsletters and the like. So please make sure we have your correct email. Obviously, you signed up for this and I've been communicating with you. So so far, we're good. But if anything changes, please let us know. We also have two different meetings annually. One are regional meetings. The V S B A structure is broken into 11 geographic regions. And we normally come around the state and visit, but we'll be doing them virtually for the second time this coming fall. And that's a combination of a business meeting for your region. You elect regional representatives to the V S B A board. And we also have some sort of important content piece that we share with our members who attend. And the second annual undertaking is our annual conference, which we do in conjunction with the Superintendent's Association. And we have board representatives from all over the state as well as pretty much all the superintendents. This coming year, that will be, we're hoping that will be live in November at the Lake Maury Resort in Fairley, Vermont. November 4th and 5th, you see the dates there on your screen. And then in addition, we do customized training for boards and supervisory unions at the district level, whatever you all need. We are invited either at the invitation of the board, or sometimes I'll get a call from the superintendent. We'll work together to set up the content that really is most important for your board at that time. We facilitate retreats and goal setting at the usually at the retreats and and any other kind of content. So if your board needs, you know, Sue and I are doing one in a couple of weeks on Robert's Rules of Order, because that particular board is having some parliamentary issues. So we'll customize to suit your needs. And I think I'm going to pass this over to Sandra. Is that right?
I think it may be Sue, collective voice.
Okay, Sue.
So V S B A, V S B A is the collective voice for school boards and we inform education policy decisions at the Agency of Education, the State Board and the General Assembly. We spend a lot of time following what is happening in the State House and reporting out to our members. Some of the ways that we do that are through our education legislative blog. There was a new blog that was just issued this afternoon. And we issue also educate, education legislative reports. So there will be a final legislative report issued at the end of this legislative session. It usually takes us a couple of weeks to pull it together. Because it takes a while for all of the acts to be posted to the website, the final versions of the laws that are enacted. We also send out legislative alerts at times when there's a particular issue that is very important that we think you may want to be speaking with your legislators about. And also, we have an annual legislative update webinar that's coming up in June.
All right, so I will talk about the SBA's public policy and advocacy. And then Susan and I are going to take you on a little tour of our website. Advocacy is based on resolutions, which are positions taken by the association on issues of importance to Vermont School Boards. They may include recommendations for action by the V S B A, by local school boards, the legislature, the executive branch, or any other decision making bodies such as the Agency of Education. And we communicate on activities of the legislature, as Sue mentioned, through a variety of ways. I wanted to show you today where you can sign up to automatically receive the weekly blog posts which occurred while the legislature is in session and where you can find the legislative reports.
Ready to do that now, Sandra?
I am ready.
Okay, let me start the screen share again. So this is our homepage.
And if you just go under advocacy. Have to make my screen bigger to see. There we go. So from here, you could go straight to the legislative blog by selecting that highlighted where Susan is pointing. And you can go there now and see all of the posts for the whole entire session. So they're all there. And if you go, let me go all the way to the bottom, Susan.
Yep.
If you just fill in this little box and click subscribe now, you'll automatically get the weekly legislative blogs. They've been coming out primarily on Monday afternoons, once in a while Tuesdays, when it's very, when there's a lot of activity happening. But early in the week, we try to summarize what has happened in the week prior. Any questions on that piece before we talk about policy? Okay. Thanks, Susan.
Okay.
So with regard to policy, the SBA's model policies are updated to reflect statutory changes or when they are in need to lend predictability or consistency to a board operational practice or would enable the board to give direction to the administration in areas where the law may be unclear or the operational parameters should be established. The SBA offers policy reviews to help supervisory unions and school districts align their policies with the SBA's model policy manual. And I just add there, the SBA works closely with Visbit, which is the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust to be sure that all of our model policies are vetted through legal, the eyes of an attorney, at least one attorney, before it gets posted. So that's a service that happens behind the scenes. So by the time it makes it to our website, it has already been reviewed by Visbit and by our staff as well. Sue, would you add anything there around policy?
I don't think so. I think you covered it, Sandra.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go, I'll go on to the next slide, which is the SBA supports school boards. So all of this information we're giving you is to let you know that we're here to support you. If you're you're bored or you encounter a difficult issue, or if you have questions, please feel free to call us and or email us and we're happy to help you. And most of the time we can help you. And if we we're not able to, we can direct you to someone who can. As noted in this slide, we offer ongoing training through live workshops, monthly webinars, and our annual conference, which as Susan said, is in the fall. Also, in the fall, we have our regional meetings in 11, 11 regions around the state where our regional representatives are elected. They serve on the V S B A board. And also, we have an educational program provided at that meeting on a current topic of interest to school boards. As you can see from your brief look at our website, it contains a lot of useful information, including a toolkit for new school board members. And we offer many other services that are listed on this slide. I won't go into all of them. As well as a few publications. So we have this publication here called The Essential Work of Vermont School Boards. And if you're in a board that's a member, you will have received a free copy of that book in the mail from us. If you did not, please let us know if you're, if you haven't received it and you're a new board member. We also have the Vermont Education Law Book, which I thought I had right here, but I don't have right here to show you. But it's a green book that has all of the Vermont education laws in it. And then we also send out member newsletters three or four times a year. So we'll move on to the representative governance model. When you decided to run for school board, perhaps you had the opportunity to talk to community members and maybe they gave you an earful. That happens sometimes when when you're running for the board or when you're on the board. School boards are, after all, the connection between the community and the school. So hearing from the community is important. But what do you do with the information that you receive from the community? Whose interests do you represent? The constituents who elected you or the district as an organization? Transparency and trust in in governance is enhanced when board members understand the difference between representative for versus representative of. If board members believe that they are representative for, they see themselves as the elected representatives of a particular constituency. They voice only the self interests and opinions of that constituency and vote only on behalf of that constituency's interests. Board members who view their role as ensuring that the views, beliefs, values, and self interests of the constituencies they know best are on the table as part of the conversation are representative of. They voice interests and opinions of those they know best and vote on behalf of the best overall interests of the organization. School boards who vote on behalf of the best overall interests of the district are fulfilling their important role as trustees of education on behalf of their communities. As newly elected school board members, you should have received the SBA's publication, Essential Work of Vermont School Boards, which I held up for you a few minutes ago. The Model Code of Ethics is on page 41 in this book. And you can also find it on the V S B A website. It covers the four areas mentioned in this slide in more depth. Once a board has discussed and agreed to adopt a code of ethics, it is important that board member conduct that violates the code of ethics is addressed in a consistent manner. Page 77 in the Essentials book contains a sample process for boards to consider. It's important for board members to hold themselves and each other accountable so that they operate ethically and efficiently. After all, our communities and most importantly, the children and youth in your communities are counting on you and perhaps even watching your meetings. With that, I will hand it back over to Susan.
Thanks, Sue. I'm going to stop sharing for a minute. I believe Sandra has already dropped off the column. Sue has been invited to drop off as well. The two of them have been spending days, nights, mornings, weekends with legislative issues as where the session is winding down and they are completely spent and played out. So we'll let them go. And I would invite the rest of you to share your video if you're able to. Because what I really would like to do for the next, the rest of the evening is to get to know each other. And, you know, I very much appreciate the way, is it Bill? Yes, the bill started off before by asking everybody a question. You know, what what got you on your board? Were you pushed or were you pulled? And and I think that board members have a lot in common. Even if you're serving in really different kinds of districts, in really different kinds of parts of the state, you may be in a small rural school, somebody else may be in Burlington. But at the heart, we all have the same issues and we all have the same drive, I think. And so I want to, you know, this normally is an in-person event where you get to meet each other. And I don't, I'm going to do my best to replicate that as much as we can on on the virtual platform, recognizing it's not ideal. So Sue gave the formal introductions of the staff, but I want to hear from you all. Who are you? And why are you on your boards? And where are you? We can just go randomly or or I can call, call out your names based on where you are on my screen in my particular Brady Bunch format here. And that would mean, starting with James.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, my name is James Heeman. I represent Waterford at the Caledonia Cooperative School District. So I'm in, I don't know if anybody's familiar with St. Johnsbury, but we're on the east side of the state. So three small schools, Walden, Barnett, and Waterford. I was born and raised in Waterford. So and I have two, two kids at Waterford. So my wife and I are very involved at the school. And again, just, I guess it is, it's just to ensure that, you know, the school is school and the students and everybody's happy and, you know, try to, try to help with the process of ensuring all that. So and I had been on for a year, but I missed a lot because of COVID and just I get the way things happen. I missed a lot this last year. So that's why I decided to do it. I wanted to attend tonight, get as much experience and training as I can get.
Well, I'm really glad that you made that choice because we did end up canceling this program last year. I did a brief video, but it was not as robust. So I'm glad that you decided to take advantage of this.
Thank you.
Sarah, you're next on my screen. Oh, you're muted.
I'm from West Fairley and I'm I represent the Rubindell Interstate School District, which is a school district composed of three Vermont towns and one New Hampshire town. I have two kids, one who has graduated from the school district and one who is still in school. And I am a former kindergarten teacher in the district. And I was actually prodded and cajoled to come into this. So I, I, so I was begged to come in. And and we did, I'm doing it because I'd like to support the school in the best way that I can. And I feel like I've had some experience in the school and with the kids and having my own kids and as a community member. So I'm, I'm hoping that I'll be able to be of support.
Excellent. Barbara, you're muted.
Hi there, I'm Barb Wilson. I'm in the Addison Central School District, which is made up of seven towns. Middlebury is the largest town, and then we have several small rural elementary schools in the various towns within the district. I decided to run for school board because, gosh, about a year and a half ago, I started going to school board meetings because truth be told, I was actually going to run for state rep. And I wanted to know more what was happening with our schools. I had run a couple of years ago in my district lost, but actually had a pretty good showing. And but one of the things that I thought I needed to know more about was the school issues and community issues, that kind of thing. And so over the course of the last year, I've been really heavily involved. And, you know, prior to being elected, working with a lot of the rural towns, because we are going to end up closing some of our schools. And I want to make sure that decisions that we make are done with equity in mind. And depending on how you do it, there could be a lot of inequity that happens. And so you know, folks encouraged me to run and I decided this would be a good place for me to use my skills. I grew up on a dairy farm in Michigan and came from a rural community and understand a lot of, you know, what happens in the rural community, even though I worked in a corporation for many years after that. So, you know, that's, you know, the main, you know, one of the main reasons I decided to run.
Asha, did I say that right?
Asha.
Asha, okay.
My name is Asha Carroll and I'm the representative for the town of Tinmouth on the Mill River Unified Union School District School Board. Our district includes four elementary schools, Clarendon, Shrewsbury, Wallingford, and Tinmouth, as well as Mill River High School, which is a 7 through 12 school. My husband and I, I'm born and raised in Minnesota, St. Paul, Minnesota. And my husband and I moved to Tinmouth five years ago. Prior to that, I worked as a music teacher in New York City Public Schools. One of the reasons that we chose our, our town was, was our elementary school and the strengths that we saw there. I had, I had long had, I think, pretty much since arriving. Or maybe even before that, I'd had hopes to one day serve on the school board. I don't have any children yet, but plan to someday have children in this district. But when the opportunity came up this year to run, I took that opportunity. And I'm here fighting not just for the present, but for the future of our, our families here in Tinmouth. And so far, so far, loving it.
Excellent. Bill?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great. Hi, my name is Bill Edgerton. I'm in Stockbridge, Vermont, smack kind of in the middle. And part our, we have one local elementary school and we're currently teamed up with the town of Rochester and we're part of the White River Valley Supervisory Union. My whole family's been teachers and as I've gotten older, and I'm pretty darn old, it more and more apparent that the future of this country, so much rides on our public education system. How do we expect people to be good at what they're doing? Good parents, good citizens, good workers, good leaders? To have a vision and 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 a sense of ethics. And so much of that goes back to family, but also goes back to our schools and our and our neighbors. And that bothers me. And I think what's, it's propelling me in Stockbridge, Rochester, there was a vote to decouple the two schools. These are very, very small schools. And the fact of the matter is together, we've been able to, for the first time, improve educational outcomes and level the cost of spending, actually having to go down. If we split and keep the educational outcomes, we're either going to drive the tax rate through the roof, which is unfair, or we're going to just really, really, really have the quality suffer on our students. So you're just going to take a bath. So my goal is to really try to make a difference in the educational outcomes for the kids. But to do that, we've got to strengthen the school community partnership and have build trust. And I also firmly believe that strong schools can't make it without strong community support. And I also believe that to have a small, have a strong community in rural Vermont, we need to have a strong school. Why do we want, how are we going to attract young families? Asha had talked about that one reason she went to where she is is because of the quality of the elementary school. And I firmly believe if our community is going to live and grow and prosper, we've got to have the best darn school around. And we don't have much time to do that, in my opinion. So yeah, there's, I'm kind of on the edge of my chair in the sense that boy, I want to help. And boy, we better do it in a hurry.
Thanks. Daniel?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Dan. I'm in Waterford, Vermont, just outside of St. Johnsbury, same board that James is on, representing town of Waterford on the Caledonia Cooperative School District Board. He got involved with school board more last year as there was a situation, we'll call it, that got a lot of parents pretty riled up. And then, so I started paying attention to school board activities, wasn't, wasn't happy with what I was seeing. So I got involved on that level and then quickly had a lot of my friends and neighbors that encouraged me to run. And then there was an open seat this year. So decided to put my name in and and hopefully I can help. It's tough, you know, Todd, Bill mentioned balancing the cost and the education for the students and and all that. And, you know, the towns, the towns use their, town members use their votes to tell you what they think of a school budget, but most of the time they don't know how that number came about. And so it makes it really challenging to balance the cost versus what's perceived as a good education. So what really drove me to get involved a year ago was So what really drove me to get involved a year ago was um, leadership and board, and the board was just not doing a great job explaining why they were making changes that were happening in the schools um, that, you know, I just didn't think that that was fair to, to the townspeople, to the, the students, the parents, to not have answers on, on why changes were being made. So that's, that's how I ended up here.
Thank you. Katie?
Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Katie Nelson. I represent Richmond uh, in the um, Mount Mansfield Unified Union School District, formerly known as the Chittenden East Supervisory Union. Um, I ran to be on the school board because I have um, a lot of career experience in education, in arts education. Um, and I also have a kiddo with some complex care needs. So I have a lot of knowledge about special education, um, about individualized education plans, about one-on-ones, about the waiting study and all sorts of um, uh, knowledge that I wasn't sure how to use at the time, um, because I am at home with my kids. So I saw it as an opportunity to both um, reengage with my interests and engage with my community while also being an advocate for um, equity and inclusion and diversity in our district. And just um, I had seen, or well, I'd seen like a, a lack of, of representation for um, the um, students that are maybe not your average learners. And so I just wanted to make sure that there was a voice for them. Um, we have five elementary schools, two middle schools, a high school, and two Spanish immersion programs. So I also wanted to be a part of um, uh, the growth that's happening in our area. Um, the Spanish immersion programs are really drawing a lot of young families to our community. And I think just making sure that we have responsible growth. Um, and so that's why I joined.
Excellent. Now we're presented with a challenge because we have two Megans and both of your last names begin with M. So you two fight it out. Now, how about Megan Maddox?
Sure, and great name, Megan. Um, hi, everyone. Megan Maddox. I live in Fairfax, um, representing the Fairfax School Board and um, I'm part of the Franklin West Supervisory Union. So it's Fletcher, Fairfax, and Georgia. Um, I have had a career not in education, but in health IT, um, and most recently in um, healthcare, regulatory and policy and advocacy. And I think that really spurred my interest in being a public servant. So when a friend, actually a friend was being coaxed by someone on the board and she was like, not for me, but I know someone. So that, I was, I was lucky enough to um, do it. As far as I, I really love where I live. Um, we are also a growing community in Fairfax. I look at all the new houses going up around us and the constraints it's putting on um, our school. Uh, in Fairfax, we've tried to pass a bond vote twice now. And the margin last time was much smaller, which means that we're getting there. But um, I look forward to, you know, contributing to the future and being a part of that and finding ways to balance that with the community. So yeah, nice to meet you all.
Great. Jessica?
Hi, everyone. Um, Jessica Tidman. I'm in Stratford, Vermont. Um, at the Newton School here, and that's also part of the White River Valley Supervisory Union. Um, I grew up in Stratford and went to school here and then left and lived in New York and started a family and then moved back here because I had great memories of the school. Um, one of my kids went all the way through, one of them, we sort of hit middle school and needed something different. Um, our town struggles a little, it's a tiny town and um, we have some of the opposite problem. We don't have enough students. It's a school that we're trying to figure out if we can keep the middle school, should keep the middle school. We also have had a lot of turnover in the last five years of principals. Um, we now have a great principal in place, so I've been attending meetings for a long time. Um, and just decided this year that it was time for me to jump in and, and, you know, my kids are now college and high school, so they're not specifically in this school, but we've been a part of this community for a long time. I have a store here. So just vested in the town and wanna, you know, make sure that the school continues to thrive um, in whatever direction is best for the community, so.
Great. Other Megan?
Hi, um, I'm Megan Metzler. I'm from Charlotte, Vermont, which is in the Champlain Valley School District. Um, I was about to say that Charlotte is the smallest of the five schools, of the five towns. There's actually St. George as well, which actually doesn't have a school in its town. Um, but I was drawn to the school board um, after remote learning and kind of seeing some of the experience that my daughter was having from a remote learning experience and comparing that to some of the other schools within the school district. And just um, my opinion, it was not in line with what some of the other schools um, were providing. So I started attending school board meetings and um, making my voice heard. And when I saw that there was an opportunity to uh, run for school board this year, I decided to go for it. And uh, it's a lot of work, but it's worthwhile work.
Well, in the interest of full disclosure, Megan, I sat on the Shelburne Community School Board before the supervisory district and also on the CDU board for three years. So um, I'm very well prepared for your district.
There you go. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, Brad?
Yeah, let's not hope, let's hope so. Um, yeah, hi, everybody. Uh, my name's Brad Johnson. I'm, I uh, live in Starkspurrow, which is a small town just over the mountain from Katie and just up the road from Barb. Um, and a lot of Vermonters don't even know where it is, so. But anyway, I'm, I'm on the uh, Mount Ave um, school board and it, it consists of five towns, uh, Starkspurrow, Lincoln, Moncton, New Haven, and Bristol. Um, I uh, went to elementary school at Beaman Academy in New Haven. Uh, then we all to camp to Massachusetts for a long time. Ended up back, coming back and going to Middlebury and then spent twenty-five years in DC and then moved back to, to Starkspurrow about ten years ago. Um, I didn't run for the board. I was asked to fill a seat that was vacated by someone who, I guess it had had enough. And um, my interest in, I'm, I'm a lawyer by, you know, by trade and I spent whole lot of my professional life doing special education work, mostly suing school boards as opposed to sitting on it. But my, my interest in being on the school board is, you know, number one, you know, sort of, you know, as a, as a, you know, sort of a gesture and a, an effort to give back to the community. But also because I think that uh, some of the challenges, you know, facing, you know, rural towns, you know, like Starkspurrow, like Moncton, like Lincoln, you know, like Stafford and, and uh, you know, Rochester and places like that. I think sometimes the uh, the school board, at least our school board, doesn't always think outside the box. Um, I, and, and I was compelled to be, to, 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 you know, go on to the board because I just wanna make sure we're, we're, we're leaving no stone unturned to try to deal with some of the challenges faced by this, by the rural communities. Um, you know, the, the thing is, is that uh, it's almost accepted as sort of, you know, the, you know, i- i- as, as the gospel that um, the demography is, is working against us. Um, and also that the, the uh, the funding mechanisms out of Montpelier can't be changed. And so I, I just wanna, you know, I'm just really interested in making sure that, that the question, you know, you know, strategic questions are asked and that uh, school boards, you know, you know, you know, seek alliances and work with, you know, planning commissions, economic development folks. Um, because, you know, Vermont, you know, i- is changing. I mean, we had eleven thousand people have moved in in the last year, you know, uh, based on, on uh, the COVID migration. Um, you know, the, maybe some of, some of you may have heard it on, on uh, on Brave Little State, but there was a long podcast on uh, climate cha, climate change, um, uh, migration. And these are things that we should be able, we should, you know, capitalize on. Um, I'm, so I'm just, uh, yeah, I, I'm just very concerned about willy-nilly closing schools, doing further consolidation without making sure that there aren't other uh, you know, ways to address our problems. I know in Starkspurrow, you know, people talk about, well, if we don't, if we don't school, if we don't, if we don't close the schools, we're gonna, you know, taxes are gonna go through the roof. Well, all I know is that, you know, I think four out of the last five town meetings when the school budget was presented to Starkspurrow, Starkspurrow voters not only approved the budget, but increased the budget. So, so I'm not, I'm not sure, yes, you know, as, as someone who hasn't been on the board, I'm not sure that uh, that um, that taxes are the key quan non, uh, of making a decision to consolidate. And finally, I, and, and I think, you know, Bill hit a real, really important point. Um, I was on the, sure, the renovation committee a few years ago for, you know, renovating Mount, Mount Ave, but you know, a fifty-year-old school that has, just needs a whole lot of work. And the, the, the nut that has to be cracked is community engagement. Um, everybody talks about community engagement, community engagement. We try to do all these things. And I, again, I don't know what other, other communities um, uh, you know, experiences with this. But in our, in our area, um, we have, we, you know, we, we go to extreme lengths to get community input and get community involvement. But, you know, you show up at these meetings and it's the same people over and over. You know, and, and, and so, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to crack that nut. Because the same people who vote against, say, school budgets are the ones who don't show up. And, and I don't know how, I just don't know what to do with it. So anyway, that's, that's my interest. And I'm really appreciative of the uh, association to put something like this on.
Oh, well, thank you. Um, that's what they pay me for. Um, actually, that's what you all pay me for indirectly. Your school districts are members of the SBA because you pay dues annually. And that funds us to be able to do both the advocacy work that Sandra and Sue talked to you about and also develop programs like this um, for, you know, we have a program coming up later. Actually, we're in the middle of one right now for superintendents and school board chairs um, that has a different content and focus obviously than this for you as new board members. One question I, I never think to ask, but I really wanna hear. What do you think the school board's job is? Or your job as a member of your school board?
I'll take a stab because I've really been trying to contemplate this.
Great.
Not to run the operations of the school. Like I, 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 at least on my board, there's an incredible relationship between the principals and the board. And that is, that's what you need. We want to support you, right? We're making sure that the budget is in line and um, that's reviewed at every board meeting. Granted, I've only been doing it since, you know, right after town meeting day. But um, but ours is to make sure the overall um, philosophy and policy is in place and ethics. I'd love to hear what other people think, but not operations. And it's a gray area too, right? Is that, am I, am I maybe nailing it? I don't know. What do others think?
This is Barb. Uh, Megan, I agree. I, I think you got a lot of uh, good points there. I, I look at, my role as a school board member is to really make sure there's transparency, that we are looking at the interests of all our kids, um, not just a few of our kids. Um, I think in my district, um, the rural community is sometimes an afterthought and, and the additional hardships that may happen, you know, with school closures, that kind of thing. Um, there's never an acknowledgement of that, so then you can't medi, uh, mediate that. Um, so I, you know, I really do think we need to be the trustees um, for our communities to ensure we're doing the right thing. And as a previous, you know, I used to be a math major and even had a secondary ed degree. You know, I kind of use those analytical skills um, to just kind of look, take a look at things and make sure that it is what it is. Um, the devil's in the details sometimes. Um, not that I'm doing operational work, that kind of thing, but um, having a high-level lumber um, without really disclosing, you know, what that number is made up. Um, and when you re, kind of refuse to do that with the community, it leads to mistrust. And what are you hiding kind of thing? Um, so um, you know, that's, you know, kind of my slant, you know, for myself personally. Is just to really make sure that we are doing things on the up and up and have that transparency that we need.
Great. Brad, you had your hand.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with what, you know, Barb and I guess Megan said. The uh, I mean, I mean, hiring and firing the superintendent is, is big. Policy is big and budget is big. Um, and I think that, you know, in the, in the hiring and firing of the superintendent, I, it's incumbent upon the board, and I think that our board has had some problems with this in, in, in taking ownership of um, of school system policy and letting it fall on the shoulders of the, of the superintendent. Because I mean, the, the superintendent's job, in my view, is that he has to pay the bills every two weeks. And that, and that's, that's gonna dr- drive his, his uh, his decision-making. Um, and so the board really needs to support the superintendent by, by, you know, you know, creating a, you know, a vision for him or her.
Anybody else care to chime in?
Yeah, uh, hi, this is Bill. I, I agree with everything that's been said. Um, we have an annual school report and um, I think every community has them. And I don't think Stockbridge, this year's, it was the best I've ever seen in the last, last fifteen years up here. But when I looked at it, it was full of numbers. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the numbers had to do with the budget. And there wasn't virtually no numbers about educational outcomes.
Right.
And it seems to me if we can't get the community excited about what's happening about, uh, for our students and how they're excelling and how they're succeeding and how their parents are happy and how they're moving forward, then I don't know how you can win on just the numbers. Because hey, uh, it's like, you mean, you can't, can't do without that for another year and you go down that path. So I think our role is, is visionary, but it's also um, we're team leaders. We've got to have the energy along with the vision um, to set those goals, to um, give that direction to the superintendent and the superintendent's team uh, about developing the programs and the, and the um, and the measurements to make sure we get to a defined end. And um, I don't know why we can't. Um, and again, I've, I've been in public service a long time. I've got scars all over my body. So you wonder, I'm just sound like a neophyte, but I don't understand why a community can't get excited about their school. I really don't. I mean, you walk into a classroom, you, you, you're with a young kid. Um, wow. I mean, uh, this isn't Florida. This isn't uh, whatever the case is. This is uh, energy, uh, and you wanna try to tap that energy. And I think the, the board role is to, to try to get that excitement level up and out. And uh, I agree, uh, we've got to do that with the community. We've got to listen to the community. We've got to work with the community. But we also got to go out and just sell our product. And uh, what happens in the classroom is, I think in most cases, pretty remarkable. And we're just gonna be better at telling that story.
Thanks. Anybody else wanna throw any thoughts around? All right, I'm gonna go back to my PowerPoint for a little while. I promise this will not be death by PowerPoint. If you feel like it's closing in on you like that, please scream, okay? Um, let me, I'm gonna actually start um, by sharing a very little, like two-minute-long um, video that was created by the state association in Texas, of all places, um, because it nails it for, in my eyes, as to what the role of the school board is. And by the way, I, I should mention that the, the SBA, Vermont School Boards Association is a member of the National School Boards Association. And there are state associations like this in every, I believe, every state um, to support. to support whatever school boards look like in their states. And it's remarkable how they do vary from one to the next. Oops. I didn't mean to start that yet. Come back. So I, I want to make sure you can all hear this too. I, oh, you know what? I'm not sure. I clicked all those neat little sound adjustments. Hold on. Okay, now we should have it. Come on. Okay.
I don't think we're hearing anything.
Uh-oh. Thank you for telling me that. Hmm. Zoom has this nifty little, you're supposed to be able to hear. Let's try one more time.
There we go.
Well, that's just not going to work tonight because Zoom did one of their famous updates and I have to install some additional paraphernalia. I will play that for you next, next time I see you in two weeks. I promise.
All right. That's a promise.
We'll use it as a, as a culmination. How's that? See if it meets your expectations. So we'll move on from that. I believe Sue mentioned the essential work of Vermont School Boards. Have you all received the book?
Let's come in.
I did not.
You did not. Who said?
Now, there are a couple of people on here that have not received my mail today.
Ah, okay. Thanks, Carrie. So keep your eyes out. It's about 100 pages and it's a combination of theory and practice. There's checklists and worksheets and self-assessments. And, and it, it's a pretty comprehensive and useful book. And we've got a web, web equivalent, not equivalent, a companion piece, I'll call it, which is the Essential Work of Vermont Toolkit. And I, let's see if I can do this without too much difficulty. Okay. So we were on our website earlier with, when Sandra was, was showing us about the way to sign up for the legislative blog. Have you had a chance to dig through the website at all?
Somewhat.
Yes. Okay. Cause there's a lot of, a lot of information here. I would encourage those of you who haven't had a chance to just sort of tool around a little bit to start with the toolkits. And these get updated and they get reviewed and we get, we add in and take out other toolkits as, as timely. For example, the reorganization meetings of the boards every year after elections, we have a reorganization toolkit that will add in when it's relevant. But, so what we're going to be talking about today is this essential work. And this is the landing page and, and we have these six different, we call them domains. And we're going to talk about all of them, not all tonight, we'll break it up. But this is sort of the crux of your job and it's very much in keeping with, with what all of you who spoke up about what your expectations are. So it is on the board. Well, we'll go into the details in, in a minute. I also just want to point out this list of resources is very useful. So I mentioned before some of the archived webinars from the recent past. So right here, there's a link to those and you get to a page where you have access and, and you can see all of the different topics. You can have access to the slides. You have access to an audio only version as a podcast. And any question and answer that went on during the live webinars. So these are available. We leave them up here and they can be very helpful whether you need a, a quick refresh or you want to check on something specific. And you'd rather do it that way, but for those little questions, you can always reach out to anybody on the staff. I'll also mention to you the member newsletters which come out twice, twice a year. The Vermont Education Law Book that Sue referenced, you can, usually the supervisory union office or your district office will answer those. And we also talked earlier about the model policy manual. So these are all, all model policies. A lot of school boards use these as a jumping off point to tailor them to your own needs. They're, they're really written as templates. And there are some which are required by law, some which are highly recommended for efficient and, and effective operations of a board and a district because these are policies for your schools. And then we have a third category, which are ones that we think are really useful, but are not required. And that gets reviewed internally by staff on a fairly regular basis. So with that, I'll go back to, let's see if I can figure out how to do this. Okay, whoops. Here we are. So that, those are the resources. And I encourage you to dig deep when you have time. And, and in chunks that you can digest because sometimes it gets a little bit thick. Somebody talked about setting goals. Yeah, that's part of the board's job, establishing a vision and setting goals. And that is best done by involving the community to Brad's point and Bill's point and a few others mentioned that. And it is a hard thing to do. And, you know, let's be honest, if things are going okay and somebody else has taken care of it, it's kind of easy to leave it alone and just let that happen, right? But if you really are doing your job representing the school district and the interests of your community, you need to know what they are. Because you're, as a member of your community, you're only exposed to a group of people who may have some pretty common understanding of what they envision for education. So it's important to reach past that and to make sure that you hear from all voices. And I'm a really, really big proponent, having grown children myself. It's so easy to think that the stakeholders for your school district are, are the board, the administration, the faculty and the students and the parents, right? But it's really important to remember the rest of your community because they're the ones who foot the bill. There's a well-known statistic and I, this is old and so it may be slightly out of date and maybe inaccurate in precision, but something like around 70% of Vermont households do not have school aged children. And as we keep hearing from the governor, we're getting older as a state. And so that number may now be higher. And if you're leaving out those 70% of your voters, when you're talking about the quality of education or hearing from them about what's important in the budget, or you're losing a lot of voice. And they may not be the ones who are going to show up at a school board meeting. So you do need to make sure you keep them in the conversation, right? They're the ones who may show up and vote against the budget because what's in it for me? So I think it's really important there to stress, there's a lot in it for everybody. So the board does set the goals and then has to assess the progress. Where are we? Where have we started? And how are we going to move forward and, and what's important to us? So the biggest and most challenging part of this, of course, is, is this fourth bullet point here of prioritizing because you do have to balance it with your financial resources, right? I mean, overall, the board has three big jobs to assure that you're getting good edu, that all students in your district are having the opportunity to have good education. Making sure that your taxpayers feel like they're getting a good return on their investment. And making sure that your operations, board operations, not school operations, are legal and open and transparent and efficient, right? Those, those are the jobs encapsulated. And I, I can't remember who it was, Katie, maybe it was you who said, yeah, but it gets fuzzy. Yeah, it does get fuzzy. It gets murky sometimes because what does it mean to assure that you're providing a good education if it's not your job to go in there and teach, right? Or to design curriculum or to choose curriculum? So establishing these goals so that the administration and the professionals that you've hired have direction and, and know what their, the expectations are. That's critical. And we're going to focus a lot on, on goal setting today. So I, I've used, actually for demonstration purposes, I've used a lot of the VSBAs, our own strategic plan. We as an organization have a strategic plan. It gets, it's a three-year plan. We review the, our, we have a board of directors who are school board members elected by the regions around the state. And these are our strategic goals. And this is not quite complete because I ran out of room, okay? But our goal areas each get a goal statement. And then there are indicators and those indicators are defined by the board for us, the staff, okay? So for, let's take the educational equity. Many of you mentioned the importance of having big lens when you're looking at the success of your school district, right? And it's not just for a few students, but it's got to be for all students. And so what, what's going to tell us that that is in fact improving? How are we going to know that? So the indicators are that all school board, for us with that, all school boards and other public education partners have a common understanding of what equity means. So we, as a statewide association, have created a definition of equity. Now, that doesn't mean that every school board in the state is going to buy it, right? Because part of that process is involving the community. We involve our community. Your board may choose to involve its community. The Agency of Education has a definition of equity, which is slightly different from the one that, the education leadership. And by that, I mean, the School Boards Association, the Superintendent's Association and the Principals Association all bought into the same definition. Another of the indicators is that public dollars are spent on high-quality programs that serve all students, right? And that's something that we, from the state perspective, want to monitor. But what, what does that mean at your school level? What does that mean at your district level? It means that some, i- if you've got different populations attending different elementary schools, they may not all have the same needs, right? And, and there are, because of the consolidations that happened over the last seven years, there are now consolidated districts with popular, different textural populations in the different towns. So you may have a, a really wealthy community paired with a community with a much higher child poverty rate. And children in poverty, it's well documented, costs more to educate because you got to catch them up first. So that school is going to need a greater allocation of resources to bring those kids into the same education process. So it's not about equality. It's about focusing on the ends, right? And then the strategies, how do we get there? This is what the administration is going to design, right? So you're working together through all of this and, and they've said, okay, we as a board have said, okay, we want to see evidence of these things, right? We want to see evidence that we have a common definition of equity and evidence that the dollars are being allocated equitably. How are we going to do that? Well, we're going to collaborate with our partners to develop a new discipline model policy, for example. One of the areas where we see a lot of inequity is in the, the implementation of discipline in the schools. So we need to review that discipline policy as a board to make sure that it is in fact not leaving anybody out, not diminishing anybody and is being applied across the board fairly. Another of the strategies here is to provide support, we, this again is from the VSBA perspective, to provide support for boards to access and respond to data on indicators related to equity. So we just last week had two different education programs around data and equity. One was at the high level for the superintendent and school board chairs. One was one of our monthly first Thursday webinars where we had a couple of guests from the Agency of Education who talked about what data is available and how best to use it and how to use it to assess progress. And I encourage you to take 45 minutes or an hour, I guess that one was an hour, and, and review that webinar video when you have the opportunity. And then who does what? That's where it starts to get murky, right? Who does what? So the school board doesn't in fact do the work, right? The, the board is not the one that's going to collaborate with the partners. That's going to be the administration. The school board is going to have the goals and, and understand the big direction, you know, we're going to define this vision for ourselves. We're going to include the, the community and understanding what those goals are and understanding what the community wants to incorporate in those goals. And then we're going to follow up by seeing what progress is being made, right? We're not in the trenches making the progress. We're there to see in, in dispassionate terms, right? Not my kid came home today and said blah, 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 but the data shows here, here's what's going on in the district. And that's a really important distinction. I am thrilled to say that in the four years that I've been with VSBA, I have noticed a shift to more parents on school boards. And I think that's a wonderful thing because parents want to be involved and want to make sure the schools are strong. But it is one of the hardest things in the world to wear your school board hat and put your parent hat, leave your parent hat at home when you come out to the school board meetings. Because you're so embedded in your family's experience of the schools. And you need to be bringing that with you as one data point among many. And that's a hard thing to do because you're living it and breathing it. And especially for those of you, James and, and somebody else. Maybe it was you, Jessica, who are serving in towns where you attended the schools yourself. You've got two data points. You've got your own experience and you've got your kids' experience, but that's not enough. And, and so the board is monitoring and making sure there's enough funding to accomplish the goals with the strategies that the administration has presented to you so that all students can succeed. That all makes sense. Anybody want to?
Good job.
Anybody want to chime in on any of that, either questions or, or answers or comments?
Yeah, this, this is Barb. So one of the frustrations that I see is we have no goals. We have a vision, but we have no measurements on how we're getting there. So it's pretty much, you know, I sat through the Um, so it's pretty much, you know, I sat through the superintendent's evaluation and it was just like, oh, you know, he walks on water, that kind of thing as opposed to anything concrete. So I was, you know, so as a new board member, I'm trying to fill my way. How do I move us in a new direction? Because I am a strong believer of measurable goals and, and, and really monitoring our progress and making sure that we're doing what we said we're doing.
Right.
Yeah. So it's, it's frustrating right now to tell you the truth.
Understand. Yeah, it is, that is extraordinarily frustrating and you're in a, you're in a uncomfortable position because your board, boards all over the state have been doing what they've been doing for a long time. And it doesn't, it's not always best practice. It's not always the right thing. And so having a lot of confidence in a superintendent is great. And it's necessary and trust between the superintendent and the school board also necessary in order to, for anybody to be productive. But if your board is so sort of complacent, so comfortable with your superintendent that you're sort of turning over that goal setting to administration, then you've abdicated your job. And at some point, you're going to feel confident enough and strong enough as even as a newer board member to have that conversation with your board chair. And say, I think this is something maybe we should put on an agenda, something we should talk about. Many, many boards do have one meeting a year, which they identify as their retreat. It's usually in the summer or it's in the spring or it's in the fall if they don't want to commit to a summer meeting. And it's much, it's typically longer than a regular board meeting, maybe five or six hours. And you spend the day sort of getting to the core of what those goals ought to be for the next year. What's important based on where you are now? Based on moving in the direction of the vision, how can we chunk that down to an annual, to annual goals that are measurable and are, are progressive over time? You know, you don't expect to accomplish most of those goals any year, but you certainly want to see that you're making progress.
Absolutely. And I did attend the equity Thursday.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And I, looking at our data, when I, and, and maybe there's not enough data there to, you know, because it's only two years. I, I am very concerned when I look at free lunch, reduced lunch compared to results compared to the kids that aren't.
Yep. And, and that is the, the equity question, right?
Yes.
And the, and the achievement gap as it's been called over time.
And it's going down and it's not improving.
Right. And, and so I would strongly encourage you to bring that to your board and say, this is something that we really do need to address. This is our job.
Yeah.
For those of you who were not with us on Thursday, what Barb's referring to is the agency of education's annual snapshot of education. If you're not familiar with it, it's a lot of numbers, a lot of data. They've tried to make it user-friendly by giving, by providing pictures. But it's a vast database that you can access through the agency of education's website. And anybody can access it, which means your taxpayers can access it when it's budget season and they want to see how you're doing. And it, there, I, I can't even tell you how many different parameters they measure. But the measurements are what, whether you're improving performance, declining performance, whether you're above the state averages, below the state, just to give you a feel of where your school and your district and your, your bigger district, if, if you're part of a supervisory district, where you are in terms of student outcomes, in terms of employee turnover and satisfaction from your teachers, lots of different measures. But, and, and includes equity measures like what Barb is talking about. When you see those, those big gaps for the, when you start to break down the population and you see the kids who are qualifying on, based on income sensitivity for free and reduced lunches. And you're seeing performance indicators that are so different than the general population in your school, that should raise red flags. And that should become a question to administration at goal-setting time. What are we going to do about this? How are we going to address this? And it, it breaks down even further into whether it's math or literacy or which, which of the academic areas. And, and so a district that's paying attention to all of that data may devise or develop a goal that says we need to put more emphasis on early literacy because we know from research, your administrators will tell you, we know from research that third grade reading proficiency is critical. If, if we haven't gotten our students to proficiency by third grade, they're going to struggle through the rest of their school careers. So we're, the administration is going to come to the board and say, so we're, we are, in order to support that goal of, of improving literacy among that population or in general, we're proposing hiring a full-time literacy coordinator for the, for the district. Or if you're in a small district and in, in Stratford, you might say we need a part-time literacy person because we can't afford a full-time literacy person. But we need additional resources available to really work with the students who need us. To bring them up to a level that we as the board deem acceptable. And maybe you set a goal, you know, if you're at fifty percent of your, I'm making up these numbers, right? But if you're at fifty percent of your population, your student population currently at proficiency by third grade and in English language arts. And your long-term goal is ninety percent. So obviously you're not going to make that jump in one year, right? So it's going to be baby steps, but maybe the one-year goal is to bump it up by five points or eight points and, and continue building on that over time. So what does that mean? Well, after that goal has been set, then you as the board need to monitor the progress, right? You need to make sure the money's being spent the way it was intended. And you need to monitor what's going on with student outcomes. And you do that through the way your administration provides you with mater- with information at your, at your board meetings on those goals. And this is just a sort of pictorial here. This isn't real. But on any one of the goals, you aren't, don't expect data every single meeting. I don't know if your boards meet once a month or twice a month. I don't think there's anybody meeting more frequently than that at this point. But you know, it, it may be, for example, the standardized test scores. They come out once a year. So you're going to get that report when that report's available. And you may talk about it more than once because it's such a solid quantifiable data point that people often turn to test scores and disproportionately. And so you may have two discussions on what do these test scores mean? They mean nothing by themselves. What do they mean relative to our vision and our goals? That's the question that the board needs to ask, right? You shouldn't have to be doing all the data analysis. The administration should be bringing that to you with a story. Here's what's happening with our test scores. You know, we see an increase in third grade literacy scores. Well, that's a good thing because we just gave you a whole new person focused exclusively on elementary literacy. So it's good to know that we're getting our money's worth from that investment, right? That's, that's the mindset of a school board. Not what, what is that person doing? How are they approaching the curriculum? Is it individual or are they doing small group? Or that's not the board's work. Few of you did introduce yourselves as either former or current educators, and that's great. It's always helpful to have that perspective when you're looking at the big picture of education. But you need to also be careful because you need to be looking at the big picture and not the curriculum and not the way things are being implemented. Implementation is the administration's job. The administration is there, and by that I mean the superintendent, the self-central office people like your special ed coordinator, your curriculum and instruction people. Those people are experts in those fields and that's why they're hired. And you're, you're building administration, your principals and your teachers are hired because that's what they know. You may also know that, but that's not why you're sitting on the board, right? And so again, it's what hat are you wearing at any given time? Is this landing? Is this making sense?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a perspective and I appreciate it because you've generated a thought in my mind. Uh, I'm a real goal-setting person and I think it's enormously powerful for an organization. I don't care what the size is. And, but I also am aware that for a great number of people, they don't get it. They don't understand it. It's not important to them. They don't see it as a essential tool, a leadership tool. And it occurred to me that we do it all the time because I think most organizations, they say, okay, give me the monthly finance report. And the finance report says what the budget is and how much was spent for the month and whether we're over or under the budget expenditure. And then the executive director is asked, uh, why? Is it over? Why is it under? Well, those budgets are goals. So in a way, all boards or most boards are comfortable with setting goals if it's the money, the spending. What we're talking about is educational goals here, educational outcomes. And if we can do it on the finance side, and we do, but the finance, remember, is only there to serve the educational outcomes for every single one of our students. So I think if we can help see our collective boards and if they're comfortable in the financial trusteeship and use that sort of thinking to, to create, I think you'll get a comfort level and help develop the support for the educational goal-setting that Barbara, you were talking about and, and, and every board needs. They, they do it on one hand, but I think we're really, really shortchanging the goal-setting and the indicators for educational outcomes and.
I'd like to take that one step further and suggest that you really cannot establish a good budget without goals.
Yep.
Because you don't, you know, adding this literacy, this fictitious literacy person that I just made up, right? If your goal isn't clear that you need to improve those outcomes, then you don't have a plan in place on how to do that. And so how do you decide how many body, how many professionals you need? How, how much money is necessary to accomplish the goals? It, it's, they're part and parcel of the same thing. And then it is your job as a board, and we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit here. But then it's your job as the board to, to do what my father, who was an engineer, used to call the smell test. Right? After you get the budget and it, and you must by law present that in terms of per-student spending to your taxpayers, right? And therefore that is most likely how your business manager is going to present it to your board. Once you have that information, what do you do with it? It's like, hmm, why should we be spending, you know, ninety percent more or more than ninety percent of the other districts in the state? What are we getting for our money to make it worth it? And there may be good answers. I'm not suggesting that there aren't. I'm just saying that if you don't have the goals, you don't know why. So they really do go together. So thank you for your comment. That, that is.
Susan?
Yeah. Yes.
I just wanted to step back to the snapshot and just sort of let everyone know that there really isn't a lot of data because it's so new. And to not be alarmed when you put your school in and there's like indicators that you're behind where you should be in several areas. And that your, I, I just learned that our school district has its own data mining platform where all of our data for many years is kept. And that's where the superintendent pulls that report information. So just take that snapshot with a grain of salt and know that it's going to be such an awesome tool in the coming years. But COVID also really put a damper on its ability to give us good information.
Thank you. Yes. And, and for those of you who are brand new on your boards, you may not know. But last year, there was no standardized testing done in Vermont. So there's a gap in that particular data point, which is multiple data points because it's for different age groups and different disciplines. So thank you very much, Katie. That, that is in fact true. And it's also a very frustrating tool for those of you who have very small student populations. Because some of the breakouts, they, they do a lot of, you, you should be able to drill down to really specific groups of students. However, if your student population is too small, and I don't remember what their definition of too small is, but it, they need to protect the privacy of students. And so if there are, you know, three special ed students, three students on IEPs in your third grade, they will not give you the data on those students because it's too close to home and it's, it's too invisible or too visible, I guess I would say. Uh, and so to protect the student privacy, there, there are gaps. So there are a lot of NAs in the data in the snapshot. Thank you. Yes, that is true. But it, it's a, and you're right, someday it will be an awesome tool, but it's brand new. It was first introduced in, I want to say, two years ago right now. And then we're missing a year's worth of data. So there are some challenges with it. But, but do bear in mind, even with all of those caveats, that your public has access to that tool. And so therefore it's helpful for you to have it too. So what I would like to do now, I'm going to stop sharing this so I can see you all. It is six thirty. I am a big believer in starting on time and ending on time. I had sent you out a case study. Do you all have that available? Does anybody need it?
I need it.
All right. Let me see if I can put it in the chat.
I didn't receive anything either.
Okay, let me.
But I just signed up this afternoon, so.
Danny, I can send it to you if you want.
All right.
I'm going to drop it in the chat theoretically. Okay. So it should be now, you should be able to see it in the chat. And theoretically, if you click on that, it should open for you. It's.
Did you hit return? It has, it hasn't shown up yet.
Hmm. No.
Now it is.
Okay, good. It may be in there twice now. So take a minute and read through that. And I'm going to back. So take a minute and read through that, and I'm going to back up. And I'm going to, you know, if we had a bigger group, I'd break you out into sessions of clusters of two or three of you. But since it's a small group, I'd like you to work collaboratively to try and figure out how to address this case, the problem that's defined in the case. I don't hear a lot of collaboration going on.
Are you listening?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I was waiting for Barb to get her head up. Can I kick off? Because I have a question, and it really relates to how we're going to address the question, and the question is, how do we understand the question? And the question is, how are we doing? And what does that mean? And one way of looking at it is they've just passed this policy. They've had no chance to measure its success yet, but they were being tasked to try to figure out monitoring tools. So my question is, is our task to answer that question, how are we doing? This new board member asking her board, how are we doing as a board? And to answer that question, you got to figure out why are we here? What are our priorities? You know, what's our vision? And so if I'm interested in talking about that, or we can say, no, to answer, how are we doing? We're going to come up with a quick game plan on how to measure meeting the literacy goal, the reading goals, the writing goals, that sort of thing. So I just toss that question out to you because we can go in at least two different directions here.
Are you asking that question of me?
I'm asking of the of the of the team of new board members, but if you could clarify, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
The intent was the latter. So you're, I mean, the scenario here is legit. Somebody's going to come up to you and say, so how are the schools doing? Do you have an answer?
So first, how do you know you have the literacy problem? So obviously, there's an indicator, right? That's been, that tells you this. So I believe you have to have that documented to say, hey, in this specific area, this is what we are. This is what our scores are. This is what our results are. And then we want to obtain this longer-term goal. Then we need the baby steps, as you talked about, to say, well, within the next year, we're going to improve it by a certain percent of improvement based on that first measure.
That's how I understood or what my plan would be. I needed to know that that was even happening, you know, that students weren't career and college ready. What is the evidence of that? And then without those numbers, you can't set attainable goals. You can't just say in three to five years, everyone will be college-ready. And I think that's what a lot of people do. So that that data point is what's missing for me.
I agree. I think it comes down to the to the indicators. And that our community is also, I think that our communities and our constituents, at least in conversations that I have with my community, they want data. They want something to be able to measure the board's progress. You know, many of our community members are focused and concerned with holding the board accountable. And I think that's a way for us to demonstrate the effectiveness of the work that we're doing and the decisions that we're making. I guess what's what's tricky for me with the case study is at the end of the first paragraph, it talks specifically about Sharon's experience and that she had had learned about this need to make sure students graduate college and career-ready. She also learned that staff leadership identified literacy as an area of student need after studying those district assessment data results. But then, you know, it plunges right into the board reading the portion that defines college and career readiness. And then I, and then after much, after much discussion, right? We don't know here, I think, what was discussed there by the board, and I think that's what's tricky. My hope is that they were, that the discussion included the points that we touched on tonight in the the goal-setting slide. You know, clearly defining a goal, determining those indicators, setting up the strategies and understanding the board and administration's role in it. But again, it's unclear to me in the case study of how effective the board was at doing so.
Right, because none of that was there. Yes, yeah, and that was where I was struggling as well. It's like, well, what are my measures? I'm a very kind of analytical, numbers-oriented person, so I want to see that data first. And then I could, you know, really help set goals and monitor it.
Anybody else want to chime in?
I just keep thinking of what you said, Susan, about how the board sets the goals, but the administrators, they come back with the story and the actual data, right? So I still see it, or I think we all see it as a collaboration in that respect.
It is very much a collaboration. Much of the work of a school board is collaboration with your superintendent. And let me also clarify, for those of you who are in smaller districts where you have multiple districts, whether they're unified or not, within a supervisory union, you may be more accustomed to having that relationship with your principal rather than your superintendent. And that is something that prior to the consolidations that were the result of Act 46 of 2015, that was pretty much the standard. You went to your school board meeting and the principal was there because there could be, you know, eight schools in a supervisory union. For those districts that have really consolidated into what I'm going to call a critical mass, those districts have, the board's now primary point of contact is the superintendent. And for those of you who are in small districts, it may not be that way. I tend to speak in those terms categorically because I also sent around a document, like a five-page document from the Agency of Education defining the roles of the superintendent, the board, the principals, the teachers, all of that. And the principals are at the building level. And so generally speaking, a bigger picture of the whole district is the supervisory union level, which would be the superintendent who understands that your elementary school, you know, that Asha's elementary school and Barb's elementary school, which are both in the same supervisory union, have really different needs, but there's one overarching supervisory union vision and direction. There may be different ways of implementing in the different schools, and so the principals are involved and the boards do interact with the principals. But the caveat there is it then makes it feel like your role as school board is to be right there in the building with the principal, and it isn't. And so just remember that as you're going through. And I hope and I'd be eager, I am eager to hear back from you over time. I hope that you do see your superintendent at your board meetings, even those of you who are in small, you know, single town or two-town districts, at least sometimes.
Yeah, I hope. Oh, sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
I'm curious because, you know, like I said, I'm what, two months into this? And in our Fairfax board meetings, all three principals are at every meeting and the superintendent and the financial gentleman, and they each do a report out. Is that normal?
Well, so it used to be normal.
Okay, but it's not. Yeah.
So so you're hearing about what's going on in Fletcher?
No, at the, I also volunteered my first night to be on the Franklin West Supervisory Union one. So I do in that one.
Yes.
Didn't know what I was getting myself into fully yet. But so I do it at that one. And but the principals, some of the principals still show up there, but just on the Fairfax board, it's all the administrators, which I mean, I have nothing to compare that to.
Right, right. And so this is exactly what I was just talking about. I'm glad to know that the superintendent is there at your local meetings. And the principal is really the superintendent's go-to for what's going on in that school. Right? And so if you're on a board that has a single school, it stands to reason that the superintendent is going to lean on the principal for that. The need, the reporting out is, that is something that, you know, if I were queen of all school boards, I would have those reports all directed to the superintendent and have one report from the superintendent that incorporates the highlights from the principal's report, the financial report, and, you know, the curriculum, if there are issues there, special ed, if there are issues there, all of that. But I'm not queen of school boards quite yet. I'm working on it, but I haven't quite gotten there. So and you know, you are working also, all of you are working with people who have, may have been sitting on these boards for a very long time, and this is how it's always been done, and it changes hard. And so we have been in the last decade, I'm going to say, in this changing philosophical change, really, about the sort of that critical mass of being, I want to make sure I'm saying this well, to understand that there's power in numbers. And that doesn't mean that small schools are obsolete. It just means that we can learn from each other and benefit from each other. And so the supervisory union structure allows that to happen so that, for example, two really small schools can share personnel where neither one has the need nor the finances to hire full-time people. So shared resources can be a huge, huge asset to any of these small districts if they're willing to see it that way. But some of them, especially the old-time school board members, really have their heels dug in, and this is the way we do it, and this is how we're going to keep doing it. And so there's some of that that is changing slowly over time. You know, best practice would say that sharing knowledge and sharing resources across the board makes more sense. I said earlier, you know, my my home district is the Champlain Valley District, and I was on boards before it was consolidated. It's now all consolidated into one district. When my kids went into the high school, the teachers knew, they could tell which towns the kids came from. Because, oh, you're not good in science, then you came from this town. Oh, you're great in math, you came from that town. The schools, the sending schools, even though we were all part of the same supervisory union, were not preparing kids equally across the board. And so those are the kinds of improvements that come with more centralization, more attention paid to that so that kids from all of the different towns can start on the same platform when they end up in a different school, you know, that a standard is a standard is a standard. And so the relationship, the principals and the superintendents, that one's a little foggy sometimes. And forgive me if what I'm talking about isn't describing your exact situation, I guess, is really what I'm trying to say. Okay, I don't want to keep you any longer than seven o'clock because I promised I wouldn't. So this whole question about doing well, and Bill, you hit it right on the, you know, you hit it right off the bat, is without goals, you have no way of knowing if your district is doing well, right? You just don't because what are you measuring against what, compared to what, for who? So you really do need to start there. I, you know, I asked you before, what if you would describe what your expectations are about a school board or for board work? And I want to sort of bounce that back to you now slightly differently. I want to ask you if you can. in one sentence, we'll go around the room. In one sentence, can you define the role of a school board? Feel free to start.
I'll start though. Susan?
Yeah.
I, I, for me, it's to it's the equity in the schools to make sure that the students, all the students are getting. I hate to say the best education, but you know, for what, what we can offer and what, you know, what's in the budget to make sure that the resources available to us are evenly distributed to the students, to the staff, especially the teachers. I know in Vermont and our, and our schools in Waterford, we have excellent teachers and the support to teachers, the support to staff and to make sure that the kids are getting as much as they can get for what we provide to them.
Okay. Anybody else want to take a stab at that?
I'll try.
Okay.
For me, the school board is responsible for setting the policy and the policies that the board, I mean, that the administration then implements. But at the same time, setting the goals so that we know where we are now and where we need to head. And then major those goals.
Great. Sarah, you want to take a stab? You're muted.
I would say it's to assure an equitable education for all students in a way that is affordable to all community members and a way that helps to engage the community in the education of all students.
Great. Thank you. Who's up next? Dan?
Yeah, it's challenging enough to describe what the school board's job is with multiple sentences. Yeah, I, I think it just kind of comes down to provide vision for the supervisory of the district with accountability to the townspeople.
Great. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to change, change it up a little bit here. I'm going to switch the question for the rest of you who haven't answered that one yet. What are three important roles of the board? Asha? How about one?
One, okay. Um, two is serve as a champion for the community and carrying out the needs. But I, I won't get ahead of myself to serve as a champion of the community.
Great. Bill? Bill's busy working.
I'd say three. One is overall leadership. Two would be building a team that can get things done and believe in the ultimate goal of why we're all there. And three is setting the direction so that every kid can find their true voice.
Okay. Katie?
I really feel like all of the words have been taken for for this. I regarding the first question, what Sarah said really resonated with me and I think I don't know, I feel all of those things. I, I also really feel like my job is to bring the bigger, like take the information from the community and form a big question to ask that encompasses all of the community. Do you know how I'm saying? So asking those harder, taking all the little tiny questions and conversations that I hear on the ball field and bringing that to a larger, broader question that would help to address the needs of everyone.
Great. And I'm going to throw one more at you for those of you who haven't answered yet. Did anything that we talked about today surprise anybody? And if so, what?
Not for me because I, I actually knew I had a challenging role as a new board member. So I spent a lot of time listening to all your webinars to prepare myself.
Well, good for you. Anybody, any surprises?
I don't know.
I was surprised to learn that so many boards do not have a strategic plan. And that's something that I have been learning of our, my own board. And I think a lot of people coming from different avenues and different careers have that as a part of their daily existence. And so I think we may be informed of what an excellent tool it is. But I'm glad to know that others are interested in implementing that.
So if you, if you are one of those boards that whose district does not have a strategic plan, you might find your voice when you get a little bit more settled into your role to suggest that that is a very worthwhile undertaking for your, your district because you will learn through that process, what your community wants. And then and, and what all the different stakeholders within the community feel are, is important for the district to accomplish. Megan, you've been quiet. And
I assume that's me. Yeah, no, I, I don't think there's anything that surprised me today. I'm glad to hear a few other board members and that you mentioned. You know, what I'll call just like complacency or just board members that have been there for a very long time. And then, you know, in some ways start to feel like you're the squeaky wheel that's asking a lot of questions. But I also firmly believe that's important. And that if you've been there for a long time, you know, I, I know every role that I've been in for a long time, I you know, I, you should get used to it. So just asking, asking the questions, I think is super important. And I'm just going to kind of continue to do that.
Great. Other Megan?
I agree with a lot of what everyone said. The word transparency is one I would add that I went for the three important roles. Yeah. And yeah, it's just really nice to hear other perspectives. So thank you.
Okay. And I want to, you know, I know a lot of these things end with a the last thing is, do you have any questions? I'm not asking you that. What I want to make sure is that if there's any specific information that anybody wants, that we address it next time. So if there's anything, you know, the focus next time is going to be sort of more heavily on budgets and also the relationship with the superintendent. But I'm happy to incorporate anything specific that anybody feels you're missing yet. And for those of you who have only been to two board meetings, you may not have an answer to that yet, but when you come back next time, something may occur to you and that's fine. We'll deal with it on the fly. But I, I want to, I want to make sure that you walk away from these four hours feeling like, oh yeah, I got a handle on this. And I also, I also have a place to go when I need help.
And for me, what I believe is critical is community engagement and how you bring them in and the goal setting and strategic planning and, and that kind of thing. And that's another area that I feel our board doesn't want to do. It's like they keep them at arm length. We don't, you know, and they let them speak it, you know, public comments, but that's it, you know? And I would like to learn more about really how do you engage the community and how can I be more effective in doing that to bring that into the board and set the example maybe?
Okay.
I was going to run it over, but I was going to suggest, Susan, if next time you could offer us one, maybe two, the absolute best books written about governance of school boards and, because they're out there now and there's more and more of them. And so I'd be personally curious about what's your number one pick that, you know, the best seller that you think we all should be reading and pondering?
That's a really tough one because Vermont, our system here is really quite different than in most places because of our legacy of local control. You know, in a lot of states, a lot of this is done at the state level. And so the board's job is really different than what we are dealing with here. But I, I will do some research on that for you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was like, maybe you kind of talked about Dan? I was going to ask, maybe I'm not sure exactly what you're going to cover, but you talked a bit about board working with the super. And I was kind of curious for chair role versus board as a whole. And then I know that they're typically a little bit different or a closer relationship between the chair and the super and kind of how all that should ideally work.
Got it. Thank you. That's a great question. Okay. And if in the meantime, you think of something else, shoot me an email. You should all have my email address now because I communicated with you. Otherwise, it's really easy to find on the V S B A website, which you should bookmark and look at all the time. I just had to do this because I thought that was incredibly cute. So I will see you back here in two weeks. Prior to that, I'll send out another handout, you know, I'll send out the agenda and handouts and all of that, but don't be strangers. I'm here for you. The rest of my colleagues are also here for you, even though they're a little bogged down with legislature right now. So five o'clock, May 25th, same bat channel. You're too young.
No, we're not.
So that's me. We are, the V S B A, we're still all working remotely. So write down my cell phone number. Feel free to text me or call me if you need me. And I will see you back in two weeks. Thanks a bunch. Good night, everybody. Good night.